All right, we're going to open the regular city council meeting for Monday, November 10th, 2025 at 5:30, 2:00 PM. If you would all stand before an invocation, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and Lord, we direct this council to use your will and your direction along with the concern of the city members and the residents that have concern with what we do here, Lord. We ask the discernment be guided right towards a path that would be pleasing to you. Pray for safety for all the members and all the people in attendance. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Let's lead us to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's do the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and individual.
Thank you. Roll call, council member Mipes. Council member Schultz. Mayor pro tem, Mann.
Present.
Council member Fries.
Present.
Council member Brady. We have a quorum. Two absent at the moment. Okay. We'll open with citizen and visitor comments. Ask everyone individually to address the city council in a orderly and respectful manner, please. Attempt to address any issue, concerns, or suggestions in the public comment section of the meeting. Public comments outside of this section will be limited. All speakers shall approach the podium, provide your name and address for the record. Comments for the public during both the agenda items for the public hearings and agenda items for individual consideration will be limited to three minutes per person. Each person will be allowed to speak once and your time cannot be shared with anyone else. Please silence your cell phones for the duration of the meeting. We ask that council members give their undivided attention to all speakers. We ask that all in attendance, please give their attention when the council is speaking as well. So we'll start with, now that's Kim.
My name is Kimberly McDonald, address 1077 rugged Oaks Road, Glen Rose. So as the CBB Advisory Board, I presented you all with a letter. The advisory board respectfully requests that the city council schedule a joint financial meeting that with representation from both the city of Glen Rose and Somerville County to review the financial. The advisory board believes it is essential for the city, the county, and public to have communication and full transparency regarding how these funds are collected, distributed, and utilized. I've given you all a copy of the letter. Anything else? No, good. We just think we all need to be on the same page. That way we understand where the money's going, how much is coming in, where else we can help put funds. I mean, how much do we have? How can we help? I mean, we're here to help. I mean, that's what we want to do. Everybody on the advisory board would love to help.
Okay, I advise Veronica, our city secretary, to contact the chair and set up a meeting. All right. That's the flag you hear yet?
Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah.
I thought you were giving a speech to her.
This means that everyone can see.
She got it. She got it.
That's Cheyenne. Hey, Marky said she was going to see your speech. Is that this?
Yes, it's tonight at 6:00 in the cafeteria. We have our LDE showcase.
Thank y'all for having us. I know some of y'all have heard them before, but this is our FFA Act issues team. They had to pick a current relevant issue facing Glen Rose and Somerville County, and they compete at our district competition on Wednesday.
Welcome, guys. Fire away.
Disney movies? No, easy. My favorite is The Lion King.
Really? Lion King is so overhyped. I think Frozen blows it out of the water.
I could not get into Frozen. It was too cheesy. I prefer Lion.
Well, I'm a fan of the classics. Beauty and the Beast has always been my favorite.
Cars is at the top of my list. There's something about Lion and the Queen's journey, learning the points of friendship and teamwork. Plus, Radiator Springs feels like a real place, you know?
Funny how you mentioned Radiator Springs. Remember how it was bypassed by that new highway? It reminds me of what's happening in Glen Rose. With rapid growth and increased traffic, a bypass has been proposed and in the final stages of approval. Will this hurt local businesses and will fewer people stop by? It's like the movie is becoming real life.
Actually, in Cars, they found a way to revive Radiator Springs. It brought people together and they turned the town into a destination. Maybe something similar can happen in Glen Rose. A bypass does not have to mean the end.
This is not just a movie. It's a real issue that Glen Rose and Somerville County are facing.
Over the past year, it seems like all we've heard is crickets. But as retired Tech dot employee said, it's not if it happens, it's when.
Good evening, concerned citizens. We are eager to inform you about the pros and cons of one of the most significant events in our small town's history, the construction of a bypass.
The proposed bypass would run from Highway 67 north of town to Highway 144 south of town with the desire of diverting traffic and creating a safer area. However, it would also bypass downtown, potentially hurting businesses and taking productive agricultural land.
So this prompts the question, should Glen Rose be bypassed or not passed?
Allow us to give a brief overview of both the pros and the cons and then dive deeper into each, giving you guys an informative overview of the issue at hand. Pro point number one, the bypass will relieve 29% of traffic, providing a faster route from Highway 67 to 144. Pro point number two, bypass will reduce 18-wheeler traffic and number one cause of damp hour congestion and vibrations that are damaging buildings.
Now, maybe the most important, pro point number three, safety. The bypass will boost public safety and emergency response times by diverting traffic and providing an additional route.
Thank you for the pro view points. Now let us state why the bypass is not such a great idea.
Con point number one, 71% of traffic will remain after a bypass is constructed. The proposed bypass will only ease a small portion of the traffic, leaving a significantly high percentage still passing through the historic downtown.
Con point number two, an eight-year construction projection equalling long-term hindrances. Con point number three, the loss of valuable agricultural land and residential property with imminent domain possibilities.
Now that you have a brief overview of the pros and cons of a bypass around Glen Rose, we'll discuss each of these viewpoints in more depth.
Pro point number one, the bypass will relieve 29% of traffic, providing a faster route from Highway 67 to 144. Introducing a bypass around the city of Glen Rose will assist with the current traffic issues facing the town. Sheriff Allen West, one of the contributors to the feasibility study on traffic patterns and benefits of the bypass, concluded that 29% of morning traffic would be relieved by introducing an alternate route. The bypass would also create additional river crossing, assisting with current evacuation issues. Former mayor of Glen Rose, Pam Miller, added in an interview, "My pro opinion is, I feel it is important to have two ways across the river without having to go either east or west on 67 to get across," meaning we must prioritize this relief road. It is of the utmost importance that the city of Glen Rose goes ahead with this, especially for heavy loads machinery and large equipment. Mayor Joe Boles admitted on the map, "It's not right. We've got to end. The traffic lanes in our town square were not built to sustain such wide loads. In essence, we must construct a bypass around the city of Glen Rose because it is the best way to resolve the current traffic and congestion issues within our historic downtown." This leads me to pro point number two. The bypass would reduce the hindrance of 18-wheeler traffic traveling through downtown Glen Rose. Glen Rose has the intersections highways 56, 67, and 144 in Somerville County, which is the second smallest county in Texas. Within Somerville County, there are at least eight quarries for sand and gravel, and downtown Glen Rose suffers the consequences of these. Massive semi trucks and 18-wheelers are required to carry loads to their final destinations, those which are outside of the county. Trucks traveling on South Highway 144 most often pass through the historic square. The lanes trucks must turn from and into are far too narrow for them, endangering surrounding buildings, pedestrians, and other vehicles on the road. In fact, according to Sheriff Allen West, trucks often receive overloaded permits, which means that they carry heavier and larger loads than the legal limit. This not only increases the risk of flying debris and other hazards, the overloaded trucks rattle historic buildings and damage them over time. According to WFAA News, tourists find 18-wheelers on the square unpleasant and dangerous. The proposed bypass would route 18-wheelers east of the city, avoiding downtown areas of high tourism. Tourism is a vital part of Glen Rose economy, especially the square, where shopping and dining can be enjoyed. Bypasses would also be beneficial for and create an easier route for livestock trailers and other large agricultural equipment and loads. Therefore, we need to construct a bypass in order to reduce the damage from large, dangerous trucks and heavy loads.
Pro point number three, safety. The bypass will boost public safety and emergency response times, which are vital for the agricultural community. At the farmer's market downtown, vendors are forced to move to avoid large vehicles turning outside their lane. A safer environment would allow for the farmer's market to thrive, and according to the Center for Urban Transportation Research, the implementation of a bypass would enable a variety of safety products downtown, including a road diet that adds larger sidewalks and bike pathways. The proposed bypass would also provide a second river crossing. Sheriff Allen West emphasized that several years ago, first responders were unable to reach emergencies across the Pluxey River due to a major accident. Because there was no alternate route across the river, Somerville County first responders had to rely on Boski County Emergency Services to assist with 911 calls. Delays in emergency response times are especially harmful to rural communities that require assistance with grass fires and farming ranch emergencies. As stated by the United States Environmental Protection Agency, approximately 70,000 wildfires have been documented per year since 1983. A bypass is needed to address the severe number of fires that occur. In addition, the USDA Farm Service Agency expressed that on U.S. farms approximately 200,000 work-related injuries occur annually. The bypass is not just a traffic solution. It wholeheartedly supports Somerville County agriculture and the community. In short, we must build a bypass for the safety of individuals traveling through or living in Somerville County.
As we transition, we encourage you to keep an open mind and listen to the information before you today. The pros made some compelling reasoning, but the cons may convince you otherwise.
Con point number one, 71% of traffic remains after a bypass is constructed. The proposed bypass will only ease 71% of traffic, leaving the significantly high percentage still passing through the historic downtown. The feasibility study found that allowing 71% of traffic is locally related. Now, what does that really mean? Around three-quarters of all traffic directly correlates to community members. Some examples are school pickup and drop-off, and local citizens simply trying to get where they need to go the best way they know how. Now, this begs the question, is it really worth taking money away from small businesses, entrepreneurs, and the city itself to only mitigate a small fraction of the traffic? The simple answer is no, because the bypass will not allow travelers to stop by, look, and maybe even buy something. It happens repeatedly. I'm sure all of you have been on a road trip, however long or short, stopped somewhere, looked around, and grabbed something for the road. I'm afraid that with the bypass, this unique experience will cease to exist. The city of Glen Rose must prioritize local businesses over dampening traffic. In summary, the bypass will only ease 29% of traffic and will take money out of people's pockets in locally-owned businesses. For these reasons, the bypass must not be built.
Moving on to con point number two, a projected eight-year construction phase. This could have significant negative impacts in and around our community. Prolonged construction will cause constant disruptions such as noise, unnecessary debris, and traffic delays, deterring tourists and reducing foot traffic to local businesses. Being that our stores and restaurants rely heavily on visitors, the loss of tourism could lead to a steady decline in revenue for local business owners. The ongoing construction could also potentially str- uh... Finally, con point number three, the loss of valuable agricultural land and residential property. This is not about building a road, but dismantling a way of life. Somerville County has 320 farms spread across 99,570 acres. With an average farm size of 311 acres, over 97% of these farms are family-owned, and many operate on tight margins. Mr. Prescott, a local resident, owns 10 acres of land where his family raises goats. He shared that the bypass will acquire half of his land due to imminent domain possibilities. These are not just properties, they're people's lives. The bypass would also require an additional right-of-way, potentially displacing three residential and commercial structures, and could affect protected properties under Section 4F of the Department of Transportation Act, including a possible historic structure and a community picnic area near Van Zant Road. Across Texas, 1.3 million acres of agricultural land has already been compromised. A growing share of this comes from low-density residential development, which is 30 times more likely to be converted to urban use than other lands. Our farmers are already fighting to survive. This bypass threatens to push them over the edge. This is why I stand here today against the projected bypass around Glen Rose, Texas.
As we wrap up our discussion today, it is crucial for you to reflect on how the bypass could positively or negatively affect Somerville County and the Glen Rose community.
In the movie Cars, the construction of a bypass only hurts the small town of Radiator Springs. If Glen Rose proceeds to build the bypass, it'll hurt local businesses and community members. Is this economic hit worth it?
Although film Cars is a great movie, it is still fiction. In reality, improved traffic flow, an additional river crossing, and the relief of one in four cars around the square would be extremely beneficial.
Now, let us restate the pro points.
Pro point number one, the bypass will relieve 29% of traffic, providing a faster route around town and improving traffic flow.
Pro point number two, the bypass would significantly reduce 18-wheeler traffic, which would make everyone downtown happier, especially historic building owners.
Pro point number three, safety. The bypass will boost public safety and emergency response times by diverting traffic and providing an additional route.
Thank you for the pro viewpoints. Now let us restate the cons.
Con point number one, after a bypass is constructed, 71% of traffic still remains. The bypass will only ease a small portion of the traffic, leaving a significantly high percentage still passing through the historic downtown.
Con point number two, an eight-year construction projection equalling long-term hindrances, slowdowns, and increased noise and pollution. Con point number three, the loss of valuable agricultural land and residential property with imminent domain possibilities.
We have laid it all out there. Strong opposing and supporting cases have been made.
The choice is yours.
Bypass or no pass? Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was a strong recovery. I want to commend you for that. You did a great job. No, you did an awesome job.
Yeah, you all.
Thank y'all again for having us.
You're welcome. Thanks. Well, have a good evening. Best of luck to you.
Good luck Wednesday.
You bet. Y'all will slay it.
Bye.
Good thing you're crying.
That's the second time or the third time they've already done this today.
Every time I come to the same conclusion, that really minimizes my high school education.
My problem is that they keep playing Glitter Rose and we wouldn't do it.
If we'll note that council member Schultz is in attendance, please. All right, we're going to move to our public hearing section, and I'd like for staff member Veronica, 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 read the first item on the public hearing, item number two.
Board of Adjustment, public hearing, discussion, and possible action by the Board of Adjustment at the request of Teresa McGee, Texas Surveying and Engineering Incorporated on behalf of owner White Rock Homes and Design LLC for a variance for the item listed below in order to allow for dividing the lot and replating in the R224 Family District located on acres 0.387 tract C7-11, abstract A136, A136, Mylon County School LD, tract C7-11, also known as 1113 Ren Street, proposed lot 1, block 100.
Thank you, Veronica. We don't have a plan and zoning member, but I think we're all familiar with it. Does anyone on council have a question regarding this piece of land?
Just the public hearing section.
I'm not in public hearing yet, I haven't opened it. What we're in right now is questions from the council members for you or Jim or anyone else that has information on staff. No? You understand it? You know what we're talking about? Now, if we have an applicant present that'd like to speak on behalf of the project.
Hello, good evening, council members. My name is Teresa McGee. I'm with Texas Surveying and Engineering. My address is 104 South Walnut Street in Weatherford, Texas, 76087, or 86, sorry. And I'm here on behalf of the owner requesting these variances. We are requesting for the minimum lot area of 6,600 square feet down to 5,689 square feet, and a minimum front lot width from 60 feet to 45 feet, which allows us to create this into three residential lots in the R2 zoning, which was the zoning that fit this better than any of the other ones without having to do a plan development for the area specifically. And I'm here for any questions. I have a couple exhibits regarding the plans that they would like to have at this property specifically as well.
Any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to open the public hearing for anyone that'd like to speak regarding this property. I open the public hearing at 5:54 PM. Anybody else in attendance would like to speak regarding this change? All right, I'll close the public hearing at 5:54 PM. Council, discussion, items, questions, motions?
For individual item number five?
Yep. We're on individual item number five.
Make a motion to approve the request for changing the lots, lot, minimum lot size for lot number one. I'll second.
We have a second from Mayor pro tem, Mann. All in favor for this motion?
Bridge.
Five, zero. You're against and passes. All right, we're going to move to item number three on the items requiring public hearing. Veronica, if you could read that for me, please.
Public hearing, discussion, and possible action by the Board of Adjustment at the request of Teresa McGee, Texas Surveying and Engineering Incorporated on behalf of owner White Rock Homes and Design LLC for a variance for the item listed below in order to allow for dividing the lot and replating in the R224 Family District located on acres 0.387 tract C7-11, abstract A136, A136, Mylon County School LD, tract C7-11, also known as 1113 Ren Street, proposed lot 2, block 100.
All right, thank you. I assume council has no questions on this item either. Applicant, I assume the same things apply to this as before?
Yes, sir.
Any questions for the applicant? All right. And we'll open the public hearing on this item at 5:56 PM. Okay. Item number six, discussion, motion?
Going to close the hearing?
Yes, I do.
I'll make a motion to...
Close the hearing. I was having that space in there to create a little bit of... Close the public hearing at 5:56 PM. Now, discussion, council members? We're rich and pretty.
Looks like he's just stretching his leg.
Yeah, yeah.
I move to move forward the adjustments on 1113 Ren Street, proposed lot 2, block
We have a motion?
I'll second.
Same with council member Mipes. All in favor of the motion? Five, four, zero against, passes. Okay, Veronica, item four.
Okay. A public discussion and possible action by the Board of Adjustment at the request of Teresa McGee, Texas Surveying and Engineering Incorporated on behalf of owner White Rock Homes and Design LLC for a variance for the item listed below in order to allow for dividing the lot and replating in the R224 Family District located on acres 0.387 tract C7-11, abstract A136, A136, Mylon County School LD, tract C7-11, also known as 1113 Ren Street, proposed lot 3, block 100.
All right, I assume council members have no staff questions? And applicant, same thing on property number three?
That's correct, yes, sir. Now, there is a request for a variance on the minimum side lot setback. We discovered a tract of land on the corner there that does not belong with this tract. It's approximately 27.2 feet to that side of property line.
Council member, any questions concerning that? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll open the public hearing on this item for number seven at 5:58 PM. Any discussions? Anybody like to speak regarding that? Okay, close the public hearing at 5:59 PM. And council, discussions, actions?
Move forward with the adjustments as presented on 1113 Ren Street, proposed lot 3, block
Second. And my council member Fries. All in favor? Is him here? Can't see him, I can't take his vote.
No, he's still there.
There he is. All in favor, Rich?
Up or down, Rich?
He delayed.
We'll do a 401.
All right, all in favor? Four, all against? Zero, passes. All right, public hearing section is closed. We're going to move to action item number eight on the agenda. Discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding the proposed encore transmission route. route. Who's speaking on this? Do we have anyone?
Well, there's not nothing there at all.
Okay, well, let me just give you some updated information. I attended a county meeting. I've met with landowners of public relations firm and attorneys that are representing landowners. We have this one segment that's A3 that goes on the borderlines of the state park where 250,000 people visit every year and the trickle down from that park is significant in this city. We all need to write letters with the Public Utilities Commission. Pam's included a lot of things here. We've written letters to Encore themselves. The commissioners in Austin will make the final decision. They've delayed the decision at the end of this about till February. We've got a lot of good things going in our favor. One, the transmission line is, they're seeking it in Abilene, Texas because they have a Cisco area where they're going to have a data center and they want to have the northern route. There's three routes. They want the northern route, which is great for us. It goes through a little hood county, but we do not want the A3 route. You can go to the Encore site, look at the maps. You can write there in my newspaper article. It's got the information of who to write, their address. You can also call them. We also need to involve the Public Utility Commission in Austin. There's three members there currently. There'll be five commissioners when this decision's made. So if you could, tell your friends, family, we need to speak up. I met with two public relations agents for Encore during our visit to Texas Municipal League a couple of weeks ago, and they both said the path to getting this done is rattling the chains of Public Utility Commission Encore. So if you have friends, you know people, spread the word. There's not a lot of people in here right now, but I can tell you the tax revenue from sales tax will decrease if people cease coming here because we have 200-foot standards going right through the border of our state park. And the state park can't be actively involved. Fossil Rim is, they're writing letters. Most of the elected officials have written letters. And citizens, friends, just write all you can. Call. If you want to be informed, go to the website that they've set up on Facebook where you can go and get all the information you want. It tells you where to go, where to write. If you have any questions, you can call City Hall. We have a lot of things available. So that's pretty much what we're doing, fighting the battle on this one path that will change the look of our city significantly. So, next item. He's got a bad connection.
Yeah.
I just hit the mute button because I thought somebody else was speaking at the same time. So maybe this was one of the items I believe is something that I wanted on the agenda, and it was whether or not we want to seek the assistance of our lobbyist that we utilized three or four years ago down in Austin to basically assist us in being very vocal in opposing this matter. She was very successful for us when we needed her. That was part of me being on council. But anyway, that's, I think, one of the things, in case, I didn't hear if you said it, but apparently they're not making the decision in December now. They're making it in February. So they have changed the date to mid-Febuary before they're going to make their decision. So this is just something that I thought we might want to discuss and consider as a council.
Is there like a deadline to make comment?
No, you may get up to the date of the commission's move.
Okay.
Yeah, Rich, I think we should connect with the landowners who have legal representation. Ask them if they've done any of that, but I would certainly, we don't need to leave any stone unturned on this item. And...
I have mentioned it to a couple of commissioners and they were all forth themselves also. So whether or not we can get into a sharing agreement or whether or not, you know, if this is just something we need to do on our own, I just think the more voices we have, the louder that we are, the better it is for everybody in the long run. So I'm not opposed to joining with the county, but however, if it's something that they're not willing to do at this time or if they haven't made a decision, I'm also willing to consider for our self and our residents because this affects not only the county, but it affects the city also. So it affects the beauty of our community.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think we need to address that with Danny and see what they want to do, if they've done anything, and then we'll join forces, so.
They wrote a resolution in the county already.
Yeah, we've done that as well, but that's...
I know what you're talking about.
When, when we, when we talk about these things, we need to really be specific about it is the, the impact upon the environment, the impact upon the, the protected species that are out there in and around this area because that's what really is going to move their needle away from a particular area. If they have to do mitigating processes to be able to come through an area where there's an established endangered species, they're going to want to avoid that at all costs. So that's one thing that when we have these discussions and write through letters, you know, talk about the, the area is suitable and is documented, there, there have been some landowners out there who have documented that they have the golden cheek water on their property and also the black cat burial. So those two are going to be critical that we, you know, we keep laying that out there in front of the PUC.
Absolutely. Everything including the land 200-foot wide lands swap that they'll take could affect the erosion to the Plexi River. It's another item, another, they call it talking point, but it's an issue and it's a concern. So all those need to be addressed in every letter, which is one of the sources of our water.
Also, as y'all know, I sent you two letters, LDL, which is the local nonprofit organization we partner with, Dinosaur State Park, and Dinosaur State Park cannot be vocal in this, but LDL can. So we have done the research and in those letters it states the environmental impact that it will have on Dinosaur State Park. So please look at those. One letter is just a simplified version of the more lengthy letter, and I hope that we can get those out there and so that we've got some facts to back up our wants.
Yeah, that's great. Representative Helen Carwin is also going to deliver some of the things that we've done from resolutions to letters directly to officials in Austin. So we're covering the, the tracks outside of individuals making noise. There may be some other things that come up, but right now it's up to all of us to do what we can. Rich, anything else?
No, unless anybody from Georgia, I have no idea how much the city spent, and maybe you might have a recollection with this same young lady. I don't know if you have any idea what would we spend because that was part of me being on council, but, but if we have a guesstimate of what it costs, I wouldn't be opposed to, and I'll even gladly make a motion that we consider it and not to exceed that dollar threshold.
And, and I think we ought to, we ought to share it with anybody who's willing to partner with us.
Share the cost?
Yes. It was $5,000 a month while they were in session. So we spent, we spent $20,000 to get the annexation fix pushed through the legislature in the 88, I think it was.
Well, I think our action should be right now, contact Fossil Rim. I have had a meeting with them. They're concerned, their new marketing officer is also getting involved in writing a letter of opposition to it. I would think they would be a proponent of sharing in the cost as well. So if someone wants to make a motion for our cost and limit it in that, we, you know, we got to February, we could probably wait till December to determine it, but every day counts right now, so.
I think every day counts. I would, where would we pull it from?
It's come out of General Fund Administration, I would think.
I mean, you said it costs 20?
It was, it was $5,000 a month that we engaged them for, and they, they were in session for four months.
The most it could be here would be three months, so.
And I would be comfortable with putting a cap at half because I'm sure the county would pick up the other half. If not, I'm sure there's somebody else out there that would. What y'all think?
I think we need to be specific to a dollar amount we want to put in, not half of an unknown amount.
Three months at 5,000?
Up to.
And 7,500.
Okay.
That's 15,000.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, our half.
Half.
Stuart, let me ask you a question in the sense you made the motion with, because obviously...
I made a motion.
Last time we utilized this person was quite, I understand that. However, I don't know if the dollar threshold because of increased cost would be sufficient. So I'm, I'm making, asking if he will amend his motion to not exceed 10,000.
I didn't make a motion, but we need to do something tonight so we have something over there. Like you just said, every day counts. So, I mean, whatever y'all want to do, we can always add to it at a later time, but I think it's important that we have some money set aside to get the ball rolling ASAP instead of if we come with some partners tomorrow and then we say, well, sorry, we can't do nothing until December. So whatever y'all want to do.
I suggest we go with $10,000 as a maximum. We'll address it with the other parties that might be willing and the landowners as well. There, there are quite a few of them that have come together and they're going to put a lot of money out too. So I think we're going to make a motion for 10. If we need to adjust it in December, we can.
Go ahead, Rich.
I'll make that motion that we consult with the consulting firm that we utilized and hopefully also look for pairing up with other individuals, whether it be county or private enterprise, not to exceed $10,000.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Mann, all in favor? Five, four, zero against, passes. I will, I'll talk to Danny and also Fossil Rim and a couple of the landowners that are already putting money in. I'm certain they're going to want to be involved. We should address it with them, so we'll contact them all tomorrow.
I'll send you Claudia Russell's contact info from Bickerstaff.
Okay, that'd be great. Claudia Russell.
Claudia Russell.
Good. And folks, just a few people just sitting here, we don't have a big audience, but sales tax runs this city. State park brings 250,000 people a year. They each spend $10. Imagine what the sales tax number is. It's well worth money spent to, to maintain the sales tax rate. It's going down a little bit right now, so it's important. It's not tax dollars going to waste for sure. Item number nine, discussion, consideration and possible action regarding the addition of Columbus Day to the city-approved holiday list.
I'm reading this before you. We just celebrated Columbus Day. We're trying to align our holidays more with what the county is doing because when they're closed, people assume we're closed for the most part.
Would this take out our floating day?
No.
Be in addition to?
Be in addition to.
It's a bank holiday. It's a national holiday.
The banks are closed.
Some people refer to it as different names. I'm fine with Columbus Day. The county takes it. I think we should.
I propose that we declare Columbus Day as a city-approved holiday for our staff.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tim Mann, all in favor? Five, zero, five, four, passes. We'll add that, and it will be retroactive. Kidding.
Thank you.
Discussion, consideration and possible action regarding the purchase of a dinosaur from the Lions Club to display at City Hall.
I move to buy a dinosaur from the Lions Club to display at City Hall.
With the cost of 2,500, just so you know. Would you amend it just in case we wind up putting it at the lane building?
Yeah, I will. Yeah. I move to get a dinosaur from the Lions Club at the cost of $2,500 to put on city property.
Can, do we need to add an extra amount for painting?
No, because I'm going to paint it.
We're not going to paint it, are we?
We're just going to leave it blank?
Well, why not?
Well, if we do, we'll...
Eventually.
Okay.
We'll probably, we don't know the cost, and then we just get the lion for now. I mean, the tiger.
I think Laura Vino in her art class painted them for free.
And so does the junior high.
Oh, do they? Okay, okay.
All right, we have a motion?
Oh, well, we got somebody in with the junior high.
Do we have a second?
I think from Lauren.
Second.
Oh, you said, who made the motion? Stuart. Oh, okay. You say it? Councilmember Mapes, all in favor? All in favor?
As a member of the Lions Club, I'm going to abstain from voting.
Okay, we have four, four, zero against, one abstention, passes. We want to wait to get that delivered to the other building or go ahead and take it, I guess. I don't know where we put it. It's at Mary Colly's property, so it's, it's safe where it is.
Can we get a mushroom hat on the dinosaur logo, please? That's all I'm asking for.
Okay, item number 11, discussion, consideration and possible action regarding a resolution setting a 2026 calendar year city council meeting dates.
This is Resolution 2025-R-17, setting our calendar year for 2026. I provided the list of second Tuesdays and of course in May, June, July, August and September, we have the option to have a second meeting.
So we'll make a motion to accept this?
I'm moving to accept the 2026 calendar year city council meeting dates.
I second.
Second by Councilmember Mapes, all in favor? Five, four, zero against, passes. Discussion, consideration and possible action regarding inordinates vacating. Nope, we're taking that off, sorry. That's off the agenda. 13, discussion, consideration and possible action regarding a resolution casting the city of Glen Rose votes for the Suberville County Central Appraisal District Board of Directors for 2627.
This is approving Resolution 2025-R-19, casting the 75 votes for, and then you all were provided with a list of candidates.
Make a motion to cast all of our votes for Laurie Mapes.
I second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Schultz, all in favor? Rich, you in favor? Five, zero, passes.
She's getting the whoop, whoop hand side.
On our consent agenda, we can consider items routine by the city council or we can have discussions on single items and discuss each individually. We have a motion to accept all consent agenda items. We can do so in one vote. You have any specific questions about individual items?
Move to accept the consented agenda 14, 15 and 16.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Freeze, all in favor? Five, four, zero against. Set the agenda is done. Businessman in Glen Rose, Public Works Director, report, please.
If y'all want to stay for all the reports, y'all don't have to.
I mean, I'm happy to.
Well, I mean, you can, but we're not going to, we're not going to re-vote after you leave.
I feel like I'm going to miss out.
Anyone?
Thank y'all so much.
But you're more than welcome to stay, so I'm not running you out.
I appreciate it.
Really interesting.
Really. Gripping, gripping stuff.
All right, Jim.
Thank you.
I provided y'all with a report. I don't know if I have any questions about any of that stuff, but we had a couple of other things I had. We had a, a meeting, I guess, the Glen Rose condominium project that was recently announced that they were just going to, to not move forward with that project. And now they've approached with a similar project, townhomes, but I think one that that everybody, all of y'all be much more in agreement with. So just wanted y'all to know that there's something coming.
Where is that located?
It's, it's at the end of the Stone Hollow Court, which is the street that goes in front of the new car wash. the new car wash.
Oh, I thought you were talking about.
You were talking about Sycamore, you thought?
Yeah.
This was the one that the partner was with.
The one I didn't.
Big Cup.
Yes, Marvin.
The one that they were going to take out the dinosaur tracks factor.
Actually, I think they agreed to save them, but they changed.
So they're changing the game plan now?
A little bit.
We'll wait to see what they have.
Yeah, just wanted to know that's in the works.
Thank you, Jim.
And then we did hire another public works employee today. He'll be starting December first. So we should be fully staffed for the first time in like three years.
Wow.
So that'll be awesome.
Where was he hired from, Jim? Was he local?
He's, he's not. He's, he's kind of in transition. He's currently with, he's worked for the city of Comanche and he's with a different city now, but I don't recall the name of it. About three hours from here.
Go ahead.
You know what I'm going to ask?
No.
Water Tower Lights, they tried to start a GoFundMe page for it.
It's not a matter of money, it's a matter of time.
I mean, we started for a different company. We need to.
So did we get insurance off of the explosion over there for that?
To be deterred.
And they're going to, they're going to replace it free of charge?
No.
Well, if we got.
It wasn't, it wasn't covered by warranty and I don't know if it was covered by insurance.
I'm going to say an act of God would not be. But I think it's more of a timing issue. Can we, is there anything we can do to enhance the picture for them to get them over here?
Now they're going to be busy installing Christmas lights.
Yeah, I don't know how many companies are out there that do this type of stuff, but we can sure search.
I think we should.
I think so, too.
Otherwise, we're going to see Stuart up there lighting up a light.
I'm scared of heights.
Another issue going on, and I told you I went online to figure out how to set the timers. I got three calls the other night during the ladies' Christmas thing. All the lights were pretty much out. They said, it's really dark in this town. I said, how soon they forget. All the complaints that the lights were put up, it's too bright. Now it's too dark, but.
After the time change.
Yeah, after the time changes really messed them up. And I do know how to do them. I'm going to do the ones I can and then we got to get on the top of the CBB.
We'll work on that to speak.
Okay.
They started doing Christmas decorations today as well.
We're ahead of the game. We're in Glen Rose, Texas.
Trying to stay here.
Yeah, I know.
There was actually a car that, a car went into the house next to the senior center. It ran straight through because, I mean, there isn't a light.
A little red house down there?
Hit the red house, took out their AC.
Took out their AC and.
Well, they would come to that Hartford and went straight?
When was this?
That's happening.
Are the people in the car okay?
He was a nineteen-year-old. He's terrified he got his car at the scene and went home and told his mom.
I bet he caught some air on that, did he?
Lucky you didn't go down in that drainage ditch. All right, Jim, thank you. Appreciate it. Buck is ill. Hope for his recovery quickly. Building and planning department, we have a new spokesman tonight. David LeBron, welcome and you have three minutes.
I say my name and address?
Yep.
We got all that. So for the permits department, looks like we went down since last year in inspections as far as from ninety to seventy. But we have, well, yeah, and as far as cost as well, it looks like our profit on that.
Oh, no.
So we can't, we go through the police report, try to catch up with you?
Three forty, page three forty-five.
No, it's past that. I'm at three sixty. And I'm still in police reports.
Departmental improvement proposal?
Three sixty-nine.
Oh, yeah, that's past mine.
I'll go ahead, David, sorry.
Okay, and then as far as animal control, looks like we got a cat problem here. We have a lot of cats.
Wow, they had a call in the newspaper.
Got a lot of cats here. It says sixty cats brought in and twenty-three dogs. Total animals out of here, one fourteen. At least we've got, we got sixteen of them fostered. And then as far as code enforcement, it looks like ten cases. Most of them high grass and weeds. But if you go back to the item like you stated there, I have a proposal here for some improvements as far as building inspections and planning and code enforcement as far as like the software and kind of getting everything together as a whole. We have a software that we currently paying for. At one time, we had, I guess, a couple of them. So I had to release some of those. And we're just going to work with the one that we got, which is Citizen Serve, and try to better utilize it and, you know, get it up and running so that when you go on the website, everything's easy to find. You're able to make a report as far as like a concern or anything, permits, planning, and just kind of make the flow chart a little better so that we can get some more business in town.
David, I didn't sit in here. Is the parvo issue done?
The parvo issue, to my knowledge, it didn't spread except for to one other, one other animal, to my knowledge. But Christie's out this week on vacation, so she probably know better.
I think it's been a seven-day period though.
Yeah. Yeah, I think she said the one the next day it had some blood in the stool. And other than that, I don't think there's been anything else.
Any questions, counsel?
So while I was at TML, you know, one of the big things that we have with people that are bringing businesses and everything here is that they consistently ask for a checklist. Like, I need a checklist. What are their rules? Understandably so. Because like if you tell them what they need to do, they'll do it. But when we keep moving the goalposts, it makes them harder. It makes it harder for them to do it, understandably. But anyways, while I was at TML, what a lot of cities have started to do is, of course, they upload all of their manuals or whatever, and then you can use AI and AI will go through and it'll sort like, and it'll build out those checklists, highlighting hyperlinks to each affiliated like code that they would be required to do. I thought it was fascinating. But the one I was sitting, I mean, this one gentleman sat there and listed out every AI that he used in order to accomplish it, which I thought, why wouldn't we do that? I mean, that's, it was really simple.
Well, and I actually have checklist. We just have to get with the system in order. It seems like everything now has been done through paper. So I'm trying to update the system. And then when you go to online to our website, it'll all be, you know, from there, it'll all be electronic, you know, submitting plans, anything that you want to request. And I can do everything from the field to an iPad. That's what I'm used to, but.
And how long do you think that that, I know it's a large project, will take to get to completion?
Citizen Serve, well, actually I have a meeting with them again next week. They're already building a plan for me to go through and they're going to basically show me what they've got to present and say, look, this is how we set it up. If you want to go with this or we can just add our ideas in there. But it should be pretty quick. They just said we weren't using them. It's already been an option. I don't know about the AI feature, but there's a lot of options we just weren't utilizing. It's already been paid for.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and I had to, like I said, I had to get rid of some other companies that we'd make sure we're not paying for too.
Well, I'll be curious then, what, after you visit with them, what they say that timeline will be?
Yeah. Well, when we were on the meeting, on the Zoom meeting, he was changing it right there and then. I mean, it's, it's all about just getting on there, using it and then figuring out what you need and what you don't need and then making it user-friendly.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, David. Appreciate it.
Convention Visitors Bureau, Texas. Good afternoon. I'd put a printout of what I'd hoped to get to you electronically and Bronca can send it electronically to everybody's email too, to recap. But the highlights from all of this stuff as we've been doing our research, putting together the new website, we finally own fully again after, I think, twenty years, exploreglenrose.com. We had to kind of pay, pay a hostage fee to get it from whoever had took it over after it lapsed. So we're migrating all of the different discover, explore, got to go to, to one thing, exploreglenrose.com. And then I included a lot of research. It's been going into that other big document that I provided that shows the, the strategy we're building to get the right kind of search engine optimization terms and words so that when people do searches, they can find us better. It's, it's never really been done for our websites. So that's part of it. And that's being, that had to be incorporated into the, into the copy on the website, which you can't just have lists of words. You have to make it sound like it makes sense and be a compelling story. We moved into the new or former CBB space, but you know, that's only temporary until we get settled down there, down the street. I attended that huge Texas Travel Alliance Summit in San Antonio and I learned more about the FIFA tournaments coming next June. So we're working on trying to figure out a strategy on, with our budget, how we can try to attract people that are within commutable distance and do a package thing with all of our hotels so that people could stay here for a little, little less money and drive probably about as much as they would drive if they were on one side of Houston or one side of Dallas to the other. So we can try to benefit from that. J.C. Stone's been a big help because he's on the board of the Texas Hotel Lodging Association. So not only does he help me with some of the statistics and strategy, I also met with him and the organizers of the Extreme Cowboy Competition that was out there for eleven days and is yet another international event that we host here in Glen Rose. And they had competitors from fourteen different nations and forty-four different states all, all right here. So it's, it's pretty amazing. They're not charging admission out there. And so they're leaving money on the table. So meeting with the expo people on how we can help monetize that a little bit more and then have a year from now to help promote it. And then also getting back into the Texas Event Trust Fund grants that are, are huge for bringing in big events and, you know, it's going to take a while for us to get back into that system because we have to apply and provide the backup. But I whipped together a, a welcome letter and a survey which got the information from all these people from out of state and out of the country, which is what the qualifying criteria is to get those grants. So we'll have that in order to apply for this next year. Our social media posts, I mean, I know everybody's anti about getting the website up, but the website is what people go to once they find us. And the social media posts that we've been doing, one of them, I can send you guys a screenshot of, of what I took a screenshot of the other day. But just the one that was on the trick-or-treaters on the Safe Treats, even though it was a local event, I still, you know, included the hashtags for visit Glen Rose and, and explore Glen Rose. It got over a hundred and thirty thousand views just in, in about three days, which is gigantic compared to what we've been doing. And then our social media posts on the various Facebook pages and the Instagram pages are averaging ten, eleven, twelve thousand views too, which previously had been something like, you know, sixty views and a few shares. And of course, some of that was in the lag when we didn't have a director. But we're, we're building that and that's driving people to the attention of, of Glen Rose. So we we, you know, I, I let the lady, the radio ads, I haven't renewed the contract yet because I'm trying to find out whether that has been as effective as we need it in the market. And I've been discovering that maybe our bigger market is in the Waco area and maybe as far as Abilene rather than the drive traffic from Dallas, Fort Worth, which those are day trips. We need, we need to try to get, so I've got to see what my budget will allow before we renew that and see if we switch that up a little bit. But of course, there's the, also the aspect of, of getting the people in that are going to spend, spending money and raising the sales tax and keeping the places open and in business that attract the people that come and stay overnight. So it's, you know, it's a balance, balancing act there. We created a stylebook for the logo and the tagline, which we want to distribute to all the retailers and merchants so that they can start using it on merchandise and things. It gets the word out. And rather than trying to monetize it by selling stuff ourselves, we don't need to be in the retail business. Let everybody else do that and put it on hats and caps and cups and key fobs and whatever else and, and, and spread the word. And in everything we do, we're, we're adding the, the response mechanisms. We want people to be able to find us and get in touch with us. So everything will have, everything that we produce that comes out of the office is going to have exploreglenrose.com. So it sends everybody to the same place. There's other things, but we hosted twenty-five Texas travel counselors in town, which are the folks that ban the visitor centers at the edges of Texas, all at the borders. And they learn firsthand about the communities that they visit. And my friends in the tourism industry that I've known for a long time were going to go to North Granberry and I found out that they were going there and I invited them down here. So we were able to wrangle them for at least a half a day and they went to Fossil Rim and came downtown and went to the state park. And so now when they get visitors or families at the state line visitor centers and that people ask about it, they're able to talk from a personal standpoint knowing, you know, yeah, I've been there. It's got this and this. And, and so that'll help us a lot. Tracy is going to Bernie for a mentorship with Larry Woods the next couple of days. He is like a tourism guru in the state of Texas, got the lifetime achievement award from the Texas travel industry, another award. So he is very generous with his time on mentoring people on how things work. And so she's learning a lot more from him than she will from me. But we're both very, very busy and doing what we can to make it work. So I'm happy to share the screenshots from these things.
Any questions? Did we, did we promote any of the stuff you're talking about at the Expo Center?
Yes.
We promoted on our Facebook page?
Yes, on Facebook and Instagram.
Sorry, I was locked out for a while.
I would also add, if you, you go on to any of the, the current websites, the, the Facebook page or Instagram, please like and share. We need, we need to spread the word because the more people that do that from here, it, you know, helps build, build it. So.
I got another one. Just had to think about it a minute. So what was going on downtown? Do we have an event Saturday? Those people everywhere.
Shop owners were just all doing Christmas stuff.
Oh, they got together on their own?
Yeah.
It was merchants association.
Yeah, I know they were decorating.
It was.
They did a lot, those, a lot of people everywhere.
I talked to a couple of the shop owners and Saturday and Sunday were good days, which Sunday is very unusual here for shopping, but it was.
And also J.C. said, you know, from these tourism conferences I've been going to, tourism, the occupancy rate is down all over Texas, especially, it's, it's down nationwide. But Glen Rose is fairly steady and maintaining. So what we're doing So, what we're doing in the meantime is working. So, that's the good news. We're not up to 55%. It's gonna take a while to get us there as we, you know, do this marketing. But the fact that we're not following the trend of going way down like Houston and San Antonio and Austin, and of course, there's.
I'm gonna drop the rates in either.
No, the debt rates are higher than.
Yeah, debt rates are higher than average, so it's good. But their cost for hiring as well. All right, any other questions?
I'm over three minutes.
I know. Outside of that, just a couple of new.
See, I'm self-policing.
Couple of new developments regarding your group and this council is, the Wine Festival next year happens to coincide with the 100th year anniversary of the incorporation of the city of Glen Rose. I've talked to Scott about it, wanna talk to you guys while we're on CVB and see if that couldn't be a dual celebration, the Wine Festival and also the 100th anniversary. It's the same week, it would make some sense. We also have the Paluxi Music Festival, but we're leaning towards May, mid-May for that. So, we'll start planning that as well. But right now, it's Christmas, and Jim's guys are already decorating, which surprises me. That's great news, and it's gonna be a good one.
And the mayor's gonna do a podcast with Justin McKenzie, who does the Building Texas podcast. I, I did one, I don't know, a month ago, and so he's gonna do one on that. And well, hopefully, we'll get people that'll come wanna experience like a Hallmark City, like Christmas.
What's that here mean?
Thank you, Tex.
You bet.
Veronica, we have a city secretary report due.
Uh, yes, so we have some upcoming birthdays. Yippee-ki-yay, Christy for this month, and then Jody and Christie also are celebrating their work anniversaries. Jody will be at five years and Christie seven, I believe. So, those are just a couple of milestones that are coming up. And then on the 18th of November, next Tuesday, our Leadership Glen Rose class will be visiting City Hall. I'm a part of that class, but I'm also planning a tour for them and a presentation from each department to kinda show what the city does. And then we're gonna, um, with the lane building, you know, and then just.
Are they gonna sign an entrance waiver before they go over there?
Uh, we, depending on where we're at in construction, they may not even go in, but we'll see.
It's no longer a hard hat area, I don't think.
I don't, I don't think it is, but. So, and then we're closed tomorrow for Veterans Day. And then we are closed the 26th through the 28th for Thanksgiving because you also graciously voted to give us a, a stay off, so thank you very much. We appreciate that. We did a lot of training this last month, a lot of training, and lots of upcoming training.
That it? Any questions for Ms. Welsh? All right, let's move to the next city administrator. Act Two.
We, uh, we'll be bringing y'all in ordinance for the new school zone at the next meeting. They're, they're telling me that they should be completely finished with construction on those and up and running by the end of December, so it's kind of where we're at on that. Then I'll be attending a, a virtual meeting with Tex Dodd on Friday for the rural group for the master thoroughfare plan. So, we'll be trying to insert some, some needed projects and see if we can get something going. I'm, I'm gonna try to mention a, a traffic light up here at the.
Oh, Gibson?
Yeah, right, right here by the, the bank. I don't know if they'll hear that or listen, but they, they seem to, they were saying that if there's any small projects or they're more likely to listen to that than like a bypass or, you know, four lanes from here to Hood County or something on 144.
Still interested in that meeting if we can discuss the crosswalks again down here.
Yeah, 'cause we're willing to even put forth money on that project. So, it'd be a real easy project. We just really need a guess on those crosswalks.
Yeah. All right. Those two.
Any, any questions? Thanks, Jim. In accordance with the provisions of Texas Open Meeting Act, Law, Subchapter D, Government Code, Vernon's Texas Codes, annotated in accordance with Section 551-074 Personnel Matters Regarding City Administrator, 551-071 is out. 551-072, deliberation regarding real property. Section 551-071, consultation with attorney regarding intellectual par, uh, property. We want to close the open session at 6:46 PM. We will be moving to executive session, will return as soon as possible.
You're done, David. It's over. You gotta go home.
Did really good. I'm excited to hear what Citizen Service says.
Oh, yeah.
So.
That'll be wonderful, 'cause we've heard about that for so long. So, it'll be good. Big information. Oh.
It's hard, but you know, you know, I brought the car with me a lot.
I don't think somebody that.
I always thought it was a good thing.
I appreciate you. A lot of good things, brother. No, my whole life. We've been, don't make this.
Where's he come from?
Yeah, that's.
They don't have, we have some.